Good evening. Welcome to the combined work session and regular in-person and virtual meeting for August 13th, The first item on the work session agenda is a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular in-person and virtual, virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 until 7:30 for matters to be discussed within limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel litigation matters. Roll call Board Secretary, Ms. Riders, please.
Ms. Brittany Williams.
Present.
Ms. Cao.
Present.
Ms. Murphy Mercy.
She is excused.
Mr. Hussein.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Des Newiers.
Present.
Ms. Glenn.
Present.
Ms. Deborah Williams.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present, thank you.
The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
Okay. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of June 4th and the special meeting of June 18th are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. For the reporter secretary, Director Brittany Williams.
The reporter secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for his adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Reporter treasurer, Director Brittany Williams, please.
The reporter of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for his adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. It's coming down to the budget, personnel, and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the reporter, the superintendent from Dr. Daniel McGary.
Good evening, President Fields, members of the Board of School Directors, administration, teachers, staff, students. Although we don't have many in attendance, I hope you're all tuning in live or will watch this on YouTube later. I hope that everyone has enjoyed the summer because we are certainly back up and running for the start of a new school year. And as a district, we really have not had much of an opportunity to take a step back to recalibrate for another school year. We've been extremely busy managing facilities improvements, updating policy and procedures to meet new federal and state requirements, hiring new staff, and preparing our buildings for the first day of school. I would like to begin my remarks this evening by providing an update on some capital improvements, some significant capital improvements. I'll start with Upper Darby High School. Currently, the Upper Darby High School library is being renovated. We hope that project will be completed by the end of the month, early September. The high school auditorium lobby has fully been renovated and completed. The bathrooms in the lobby have been fully renovated and completed. The auditorium will have new stage, sound, rigging, and setting renovations. The high school parking lot has been repaved. We are renovating the softball field and baseball field. There will be turf infield at the high school. We've also renovated and repaired the home stands at the athletic stadium at the high school, and we're replacing the away stands at the athletic stadium at the high school. They are just some of the projects that have taken place, large-scale projects that are taking place at the high. Beverly Hills Middle School. We are renovating and almost completed renovating the library at Beverly Hills Middle School as well as renovating the auditorium space at Beverly Hills Middle School. Similarly, at Drexel Hill Middle School, we are renovating the library, renovating the auditorium, and have renovated probably the original locker rooms at Drexel Hill Middle School. They will be updated and renovated. Again, all of these are hopefully by the start of the school year, if not very soon into the first, first days of school. Hillcrest Elementary School has new flooring for the hallways, classrooms, and cafeteria along with asbestos abatement that we took, that took place over the summer. Westbrook Park Elementary School, and this one is dragging out a little bit longer than we'd hoped, but we're replacing existing HVAC units, the old units that were in part of that building. There's been a school-wide painting and a ceiling and lighting replacement. Now, some of the ceiling replacement at Westbrook Park is not fully completed yet, but the new ceilings that are in place and the new lighting is in place and the new painting looks fabulous there. So we gotta be patient. It's taking a little bit longer, but we hope to have that all completed soon after the start of the school year. And last but not least, one of the major ongoing facilities and capital improvements that we have is the construction of the new Clifton Heights Middle School. If you drive by the Clifton Heights Field off of Springfield Road, you'll see, like I like to call them Tonka trucks from back in the days being a kid, but you'll see backhoes and bulldozers moving earth and dirt. With all these construction projects, as I said last evening, I want to say thank you for everybody, to everybody for their patience. These are just some of the larger-scale projects that are taking place this summer. I want to thank the entire administrative team for working together to pull all this off. Our school facilities are used literally for thousands of community events beyond what the school district holds, and it takes a tremendous amount of coordination, scheduling, and patience to complete large-scale facility improvements when your facilities are in constant use. I want to say thank you to Doctors Manfree and Simone, all of the principals in the district, thank you so much. I'd like to say thank you to the Director of Operations, Marvin Lee, our Manager of Facilities, Mr. Tim Leaf, Director of Capital Projects, Craig Hornacek, as well as Joe McGilvery, who helps with purchasing and contracts, and Chris Rossiter, the Assistant Manager of Facilities. In particular, thank you to our Board of School Directors for providing us with the support to move forward to improve the district facilities. Before I move into the next topic for this evening, like I said earlier, I acknowledge how cumbersome these projects are. Anybody who does any kind of renovations in your own property, your own house, it's not easy to get through them. So to the neighbors in the community where we're experiencing construction in Clifton Heights or anywhere else, sorry for the, the short-term inconvenience. We're certainly hopeful that you agree with us that these improvements that we're making in the school district are for the best for the community and the kids, and that they will be celebrated and something to look back on as a huge success here in the school district. So thank you, thank you, and we're blessed to have the support of this board and the team that we have here in the district to put those projects in place. Again, it's a total team effort that carries through to the next part of my update, which is the staffing update for the 25, 24, 25 school year. As we know, there's a national teacher shortage, and it continues to create an atmosphere where all school districts are competing for the same applicants. While I appreciate the state's recent efforts to encourage individuals to get into this profession and new student teachers to receive stipends, there's still, still a lack of highly qualified teachers in key subject areas such as math, science, reading, especially special education, and students in need of English language support. I'm a huge sports fan, but when I see professional athletes making millions and millions of dollars and new stadiums being built for billions of dollars, I have to question our focus as a society. We need to recalibrate and emphasize just how valuable teachers are in this society that we have here today and really think about if we have millions of dollars to spend on athletes, not that I discredit what they do, or billions of dollars to put into new stadiums, we certainly can fund education and fund this profession. How is it possible that educators continue to fight for professional respect? It is tragic that there is not more of an understanding and admiration for the vital role public education and educators play in the communities where they work and all the positive life-changing support they provide children. Here in Upper Darby, our principals, directors, and the Office of Recruitment, Retention, and Culture have been working nonstop to do their best to open the school year with all teaching positions, support staff positions, bus drivers, crossing guards, noontime assistants, and other vacancies filled. Right now, we have approximately 98% of all of our professional positions filled. We still have, as of today, 14 unfilled teaching positions, and that are in the areas of, as I said, autistic support, special education, English language learners, English teachers, reading specialists, math, science. We still have to find some crossing guards. We could always use bus drivers, support staff, and folks who are willing to work with our kids on our playgrounds during the noontime lunch at the elementary school level. We will continue to keep vacant positions posted until they're filled. For the past several years, I've had the opportunity to provide updates on the opening of our schools since the pandemic and how we're going to handle them. And since the pandemic, obviously, work-life and work balances have changed. People getting back to work continues to slowly creep back to normal levels. We will be opening schools on time. I could tell you that I continue to get questions about whether schools will be opening on time. Schools will be opening on time with appropriate staff hired as our highest priority. We still will have three instructional models, as we have in the school district. We'll have in-person asynchronous and synchronous learning. And once again, again, for this school year, we have asked teachers at the secondary level to consider teaching an additional course for additional compensation. That is so that we do not have to take away certain courses for high school students who want them because we could not find a highly qualified certified teacher in that content area. I'm happy to report that any current secondary professional teacher vacancy will be covered by a current Upper Darby teacher. I want to say thank you to the Upper Darby Association, UDEA, the union, and their leadership, as well as high school principal, Dr. Craig Parkinson, and the high school principal, Mr. James Finch, who's our, was formerly assistant principal at the high school, but is now the supervisor of guidance. He helps with scheduling at the high school still. Assistant Principal Danielle Brino, as well as Ms. Kelly Simone, the Director of Secondary Education, and Mr. Marshall Eck, the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, for putting best their efforts to make sure the kids have classes. I know the meetings with me are painful throughout the summer to make sure that we're doing this, so I appreciate your patience in making sure that we're having those classes run with kids. Please read over our plan for instruction on days when we do not have enough bus drivers or there are a higher-than-normal number of professional staff out without coverage. We will be putting this communication out again. We've already put out our transportation plan. Before August 28th, we'll be putting a plan out as well for times or in the school year when we have a high teacher turnout, turnover on a day or subs and a lack of subs as well as transportation. You will receive that plan prior to the start of the school year and prior to August 28th. We put that out every single year at this time. As a district, we will continue to do our best to recruit and retain the best staff that we can, and the July state budget news certainly provided us with some much-needed relief. While the district was required to pass its budget by June 30th without a true sense of state and/or federal funding, we did our best to keep all district programming and staffing in place, limit any tax burden on the community, and make a conservative use of our fund balance as the focal points for balancing our budget. I want to thank all of our home and school representatives, our students, staff, board members, as well as state representatives Gina Curry, Ms. Heather Boyd, and Senator Tim Carney for advocating for increased funding of public education. Even though we did not get the original dollar amount of close to $16 million or more, we are receiving over $10 million in funding we need. Again, this is after we passed our budget. The funding will go toward offsetting bond issuances for facilities improvements and for recruiting and retaining staff. It is our hope that the increase in funding that took place this past July will continue to take place for the next six years, but there is not a clear, comprehensive plan for that at this time. So what does that mean? It means we must continue to advocate for the funding of public education in Pennsylvania. I will be reaching out to everyone again this year to join me in advocating for Upper Darby School District students. Our focus in Upper Darby has been opportunity, unity, and excellence. For this school year, my opening remarks will concentrate on celebrating every success we have as a district and the importance of appreciating one another and keeping a positive supportive culture in our schools. With that said, each year at this time, I ask everyone and anyone who is tuning into our meetings to please get involved in your Home and School Association when and wherever possible. There is no greater resource in supporting and moving a district forward and supporting everything that we do than getting involved in our schools, and that relationship between home and school is so important. Thankfully, we started conversations regarding the national teacher shortage over a year ago, and we continue to provide those updates to our Home and School Association we did last night. We provided all of our home and schools with an update, and I will be holding my annual fall coffee conversations with community members and staff this fall. Look for those dates that are coming out soon, or members, if you're available, you're certainly more than welcome to attend. At this time each year, I also give my goals for the year. Many of them are multi-year goals. My goals for the 24-25 year will be to continue to recruit, develop, and retain the best staff, continue to improve our communication internally and externally, continue to work on emphasizing social-emotional learning for all students, emphasize a strong educational foundation at the elementary level and focus on growth, continue to promote, reinforce, and inclusive learning environment for all students in the community we serve, and then continue to implement the new teacher and administrative evaluation system that was in its first year last year. I am thankful to our Board of School Directors and my team for their support, for the opportunity to be the superintendent of this district. It is a tremendous honor and privilege to hold this position. Members of the Board of School Directors, this concludes my report for this evening. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Any questions from the board? Great. We will now have an update on the June 18th, 2024 Education and Puples Services Committee meeting from Director War Savage, who will read a summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
Thank you very much, President Fields. We had the Education and Puples Services Committee meeting here Tuesday, June 18th. We went over three pieces of information, some of which is requiring or had required board action. First one was the District Title I TSI and ATS I school level plans. Dr. Greg Manfree and Mrs. Kelly Simone presented the District Title I TSI and ATS I school plans for the upcoming school year. The discussion focused on common themes and highlights as well as the timeline for submission to the PA Department of Education. I do have a point of clarity or a question. This might go to Kyle. The last statement here says this item was for board action at the August 8th, 2024 regular business meeting. Clearly, we didn't have a meeting last week, so I'm not sure if that needs to be updated or if perhaps that does something to the summary for sunshine because something has to be updated.
It does nothing to the sunshine implications.
All right. All right. So nothing to worry about there. Good, good. Second item on the agenda summary was the 2024-2025 Professional Development Calendar, and that required board action. Dr. Christine Kelly presented the final version of the 2024-2025 School Year Professional Development Calendar for the district. Board action was required, and this item was on the agenda for the special voting meeting following the June 18th, 2024 committee meetings. The last item on the agenda that evening was policies requiring board action, that being Policy 237 regarding electronic communication devices. There were no public comments on those items. That ends my summary.
Thank you, Director War Savage. I will provide an update on the June 18th Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Update and summary. So we have this meeting Tuesday, June 18th. We had one item on the agenda. There was the 2024-2025 Final Budget Update. This was informational. In compliance with the Act 1 timeline, District Administration presented the 2024-2025 Final General Fund Budget. The final general fund budget has taken all available and relevant information into consideration at the time and was presented with a 3.01% tax increase. There were no public comments. And that concludes the summary of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Now over to the Instruction and Curriculum Report approval to Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Yes, we do have a public comment from, from a parent. If you want to come up, this parent's going to make a comment. I want to protect some of her privacy in this, so she's going to give her name generally where she speaks and give a general comment about what her concerns are.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name is Latonya Hill. I just wanted, I'm a parent of three children in Upper Darby School District, originally four. I just wanted to let you know I am present, just make sure like all decisions based off like discipline and things like that, it just like made fair. Just wanted to let you know I was here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Are there any other, are there any comments? Or we had comments from the board, we had comments from the public. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say I oppose. All those abstaining, please say I abstain.
I'm sorry, and I don't mean to, I'm just a little confused based on the comment we just received. Is it something in this report that we should be looking into further?
That was just a parent who wanted to speak to the board and address that she was here and have her consider, just to have us provide her consideration.
Although the parent didn't say it, my suspicion is that she is talking about a student for an adjudication that you are, that you have in front of you. So.
Okay.
The answer is there is something on the report relating to this parent and what she was speaking to.
Okay, I'm going to do a reset. Okay. So there is, there's something in this report, and I believe it's the Construction.
If there are questions.
Curriculum and Instruction Report.
If there are questions from the board, what I would suggest is that we take a recess for the board to take a closer look at this item because this is not a matter for public discussion. So if the board wishes to.
Review this?
Review this further, we can take a moment to recess, go back into the conference room, and then come back.
Okay, could I? I need to ask for a motion, right?
You can simply recess the meeting.
Okay, I'm going to recess the meeting for 10 minutes to discuss this report with the board and provide privacy, and we will start again in 10 minutes. Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Personnel report from Board Director Piasantini, Kao.
The personnel report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Please go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody who's retiring right now for the many years of service and welcome all of our newcomers to the royal family.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Oh, you have a comment, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see we have someone new in the audience that I would like to welcome tonight, and so Mr. Lonnie Diggs, I want to say congratulations to you on your appointment and welcome you.
Okay, so that was, any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Next, we'll have the policy report from, first reading, from Director Neil Des Newiers.
Thank you, President Fields. The, the policy report first reading does not require a vote, but I do have a few comments about the policies under consideration for first reading this evening. So there are nine policies under consideration for a first reading tonight, which is an unusually high number. So Policies 103 and 104 cover discrimination, Title IX, sex-based harassment affecting either students or staff respectively. These policies are on the report because the federal government released new Title IX regulations this spring and the policies that require updating. Most of the rest of the policies are being updated because of, hmm, school safety and security updates that were part of Pennsylvania Act 33 of 2023. And the last policy, Policy 815, is being updated at the board's request to better clarify that images and video don't have to depict actual persons or events to fall, to, to run afoul of prohibitions in various policies. Specifically, this refers to deep fakes and neutified images and videos. That ends my comments, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Director Des Newiers. There's no report for the second policy report for the second reading, so we'll move on. Director Mohammed Hussain with the Supplies Report.
Thank you, President Field. The Supplies Report is in the hands for each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for this adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried.
I got choked up over supplies, sorry.
Transportation Report, Director Piasantini, Kao.
The Transportation Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Director Deborah Williams with the Facilities Report.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are all in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. And before I move for their adoption, I just wanted to recognize a few donors. And we wanted to thank Mr. Lingo for his monetary donation for district support, the Kids in Need Foundation for their supplies, Mr. Wetso for Acello, and Mr. Santiago for school supplies. So I just wanted to recognize those groups and individuals, and now I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. There's no Food Service Report. Now Director Deborah Williams again with the Finance and Budget Report.
Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. We are now at the time of collateral assignments. We're just back from the summer. Nothing from Community College. Anything from the IU? Director Deborah Williams?
Yes, I do have a report from the IU. We just had a meeting this last Tuesday, and we have one, I'm sorry, last Wednesday, and we have one again tomorrow, but the IU just hosted a conference, AI. But the IU just hosted a conference, an AI conference, which I know some folks from Upper Darby attended. It was very well-attended. It was a conference on strategically leveraging AI in education. And so that conference was held on Zoom. It was very well-attended, probably about two-hundred-and-fifty users on Zoom. And it was very informative. There were sessions for educational leadership, for teachers. It was conference, sorry, sessions on cybersecurity, et cetera. So again, very well-attended and very informative. I attended it myself. So that concludes my report. I will give another one after we have our next meeting, which will be held at Wednesday tomorrow.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Director Williams. Home and School, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. Basically, we went over a vast majority of Dr. McGary's superintendent report. Two things I do want to go on record for. The one thing that we did discuss was a bus driver situation. Administration has, is feeling really good about the synergy that we have with our bus and transportation staff, but parents were reminded that in the event that there is any kind of a short staffing for any reason, callouts, things of that nature, that the elementary students and those attending any of our special ed programs will be prioritized because it is the view of this administration and the district that no kid, if it's at all possible, should be late for school, especially for the ones responsible for transporting them. And so we're taking that to heart and making sure that we improve on that for this next school year. So that was really good to hear from the administration. The other thing that I want to congratulate Dr. McGary on was making it clear to the home and school leadership, as well as everyone who was on the call, that regardless of whatever federal regulations that come out that say that they're going to protect kids or adults in a specific way, but then there are political talking heads making a bunch of unnecessary noise about it. No matter what Upper Darby, Upper Darby's view is that everyone is worth full legal and appropriate protection on terms that work for them, and we are all about equality, and we are very bold with it, and we are not ashamed to share that with the public.
Thank you, Director War Savage. PSBA Representative, Director Williams.
Yep, thank you. PSBA has an upcoming conference. PASA slash PSBA is hosting a conference October the sixth through the eighth, and that'll be in the Poconos. November second, twenty-twenty-four is the Delegates Assembly. For those of you who do not know what that is, that's their conference where they have their platform and bylaw consideration. And so we are sending three delegates, myself, Director Brittany Williams, and Director Neil Desneuerz will be attending. So I believe we are all going to attend virtually, although it will be held in person as well in McCannixburg, PA. Also, wanted to remind you that there is training available on my PSBA for board members. So for any of you that are interested in receiving individual training, you can just log on to your account there. That concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Williams. Policy Liaison, Director Desneuerz.
Thank you, President Fields. So one of the, two of the policies that were on the first reading report this evening were Policies One-O-three and One-O-four dealing with discrimination and sex-based harassment. The, and I mentioned during that report that those changes come from changes to the Title IX regulations published by the federal government this spring. So the updates we considered tonight are, I might say they're the minimum required updates. And our solicitor, Mr. Berman, his firm, Fox Rothschild, has been hard at work and actually come up with language that is possibly better suited to the district, to the district's needs in that it was mentioned that there's litigation over the new Title IX regulations. Well, two of our schools, Upper Darby High School and Drexel Hill Middle School, are impacted by that litigation, and so we, for the time being, while this litigation is ongoing, the district has to operate sort of parallel universes where the new regulations apply to most of our schools, but the old regulations apply to Upper Darby High School and Drexel Little Middle School. So the Fox Rothschild's language better addresses that, so we may be adopting some or all of that language in additional changes to Policies One-O-three and One-O-four in the near future. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Director Desneuerz. Nothing for Communications. Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, Director War Savage, anything?
Thank you very much, President Fields. Just two things. One, on behalf of the foundation, I want to thank all the community members who've been coming out to all of our programming that concerns the Shaner Foundation or the Shaner Programming Summer Stage, as well as Shooting Stars. Also, next month, I will be attending my first board retreat with the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation. It'll be sometime again next month, and I hope to have a more in-depth report at that time.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. Is there any old business from board members? Is there any new business from board members? I will say again, as I say every year, stop signs are a period, not a comma. A complete stop is appreciated. Our kids appreciate it as well. School's going to be back in. Take some extra time to get to work in the morning. Please do not roll through the stop signs. Also, I see a lot more of those electric scooters on the road these days. I have no idea what the traffic rules are for them. So if you're driving around in a real vehicle, not an electric scooter, again, please be careful because who knows, somebody may be zipping their way to school on one of these electric scooters, and I don't even know if we have a place to put them in the building. So good luck with that, Dan. All right, these kids are hauling, they're hauling around in their backpacks. That's all I have.
If I could, can I add to that?
Oh, please do.
Also, be mindful of the speed limit in school zones. Noticed last year, people were just kind of flying through our school zone.
Yes, so actually, yes, the school zone is still fifteen miles an hour, not a hundred and fifteen. And State Road is still thirty-five miles an hour, although people do forget, especially in the morning when they're trying to get to work. So please, please, please pay attention to the traffic signs and the speed limit. We want all our kids to get to school safe and sound. Okay. Thank you. We're now at the time for the public hearing. We'll call on Upper Darby District residents who have signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy Nine Zero Three, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. Here is my sign-in sheet. It is blank. Which is typical. Are there any phoned in or emailed comments?
No, sir. There are no comments.
Thank you, Director Buford. Is there a motion for the, I'm going to say one thing. School board, this is a participatory entity, okay? This room is essentially empty. I have one parent. Thank you for showing up and advocating for your child. We should see, and Dan has said himself, the stuff we vote on, which he's, and look, it makes our night longer. Deborah is not happy that I'm saying this, right? But we should see, like, I have plenty of seats here. It's well-air-conditioned, right? People should be here, reading over the stuff, listening to what we're talking about, you know, addressing their concerns. I don't like a long night, but I do like to hear from the public. Right? So please, please. And again, the administration is very annoyed right now with me. Come on out and participate in this. Right? We're here for you guys. I was listening to somebody tell a story about an HOA board, the Homeowners Association Board, a meeting they went to. There was stuff going on, and it was, everything online was like gossip mill and panicked and upsetting. And they went to the meeting, and there was so much clarification provided. And if you're getting your information from social media or from what your neighbor tells you, I guarantee it's probably wrong, but if you come here, you'll get the correct information, right? So please participate. I am sorry. But it is for me, right? Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.